And please excuse me if I cough from time to time, I'm still getting over something. Okay. So we have two public hearings this evening to begin the meeting. First up is going to be a public hearing on introductory local law two of 2021, the tax cap override. So the tax cap for fiscal year 2021 to 2022 is 1.31%, which is lowest that it's ever been as far as I remember. Which will make it very difficult for the board to stay under, especially due to unforeseen expenses and losses due to COVID. We will however, do everything we can to keep the tax levy as low as possible. So first public hearing, this is a public hearing to entertain public comments and introductory local law two of 2021. To adopt a local law to override the tax levy limit for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. Established in general municipal law section three C. Public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on February 16th, 2021. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this? Anyone at all, please unmute yourself and say so. Okay, hearing none. Can I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing, please?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Buick with the motion. Andrew, I see your hand up.
No, Gomez.
Our trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How about I? Can I now have a motion in a second to adopt local law four of 2021, which is the tax cap override?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Buick with the motion. Trustee Gomez also had his hand up for the second. Any discussion?
Would that be local law two?
No.
No, it's local law four.
It's introductory local law numbers and then local law numbers. So I was getting confused.
I got confused.
Oh, all the time. Any this, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How about I? Roll call, please, does?
Mayor Egan.
Aye.
Trustee Burke.
Aye.
Trustee Jacomaza.
Aye.
Trustee Gomez.
Aye.
Trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Passes. Next up, introductory local law three of 2021, property maintenance. So we have a public hearing to entertain comments and introductory local law three of 2021, which will amend chapter 240, property maintenance of the village code. Public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on February 16th, 2021. Anyone in the public wish to speak on this? Nobody? Okay, so due to some comments that we're going to have, I'm going to ask for a motion in a second to continue the public hearing to the March 11th, 2021 meeting.
Make the motion.
Trustee Buick with the motion. Trustee Jacomaza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
How about I? Okay, so now we're going to have a brief discussion with Kelly who'd like to talk about the comments received by a couple of board members. Kelly?
Yes, so the board had reviewed this and I just wanted to go over a couple of items. If you have it in front of you, I'll just reference the section number. I wanted to go over section 240 dash four. There was a question because sometimes people will be cleaning their own yards and you know, blow the leaves and blow the sticks and everything like that into the woods behind their house. Something like that. And there is a little bit of confusion with some of the language. What I would recommend and the language specifically says that it shall be unlawful for any person. Either as owner, lessy, agent, tenant, or otherwise to throw, cast, or deposit, or cause, or permit to run, drop, or remain. Et cetera. Any waste, leaves, brush, hay. So this was really meant for when people are putting leaves and tree branches and waste and all of those other items on property that is not their own. If it is their own property and they're cleaning it, they're not depositing those materials on vacant land. But I do think that some of the language is a little confusing, so I would recommend removing. Permit to run, drop, or remain, or just that phrase, because I think that's a little confusing. It would still be that all of those people are unable to do it themselves and they cannot cause somebody else to do it. But the distinction is that this is not property that they own, so I can also include a statement. Or a phrase saying that not owned by such person. I think that might clarify it. What does the board think about that?
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah. So the next section is 240 dash five. I just want to skip that for now because there's a section at the end. Same with 240 dash six. So there was also a question on D, which is right under 240 dash seven. Of whether or not the term blight should be defined. Blight is really only used, it's used three times in the purposes and application section. Which you wouldn't be looking to as much, but it's also used in section 240 dash 10. A three, so. That one, that one uses it by saying that something may constitute a blighting factor. So we could define it if you want, but I'm not sure that it's used enough times to really. Necessitate a definition, but if you'd like, I can, I can get a definition and propose one to the board.
Anything that would help clarify anything is good by me, so adding a definition would not be a bad thing.
It seems like the intent of this is for blight to mean vegetative maintenance and I just want to make sure that we, you know, you can use the word blight in a different text in different ways, you know, like a blight on society, a blight is. In here is vegetation, you know, so I want to make sure that people understand.
Yeah, no, I think that's, I will propose something. But I know it gets a little confusing because I was taking what the village currently has for property maintenance. And then putting in the weeds part, then renumbering and then adding a third part. But this section 240 dash seven onwards is actually part of article two, a new article two that's called property standards. So it's not specific to the vegetation, but I see where the confusion is and I'll provide a definition for the board to talk about. Um, the next is 240 dash 10 A two. And there was a question about whether or not maintenance, it initially talks about fences or other accessory structures being maintained and clearly that's something. That the village had talked about and was interested in, but then when it discussed landscaping, it said that replacement of trees and shrubs which may die or otherwise be destroyed has to be replaced. Now, if it's in connection with a site plan, typically the planning board would include a condition such as that, but this doesn't limit it to that. This does apply broader. In a more broad fashion, so it's up to the board, but if you think that this might be a bit overbroad. Then I would just suggest deleting the entire sentence that says such maintenance shall include to the end. And then it would really just be that these things have to be maintained. Period.
I just, my point on that is I think it's a little overreaching, you know, to your residents that if somebody wants to take care of a bush in their house because they don't like it anymore. They have to replace it, or if a tree falls during a storm, you're going to force them to replace it, you know, those are, those things could happen under a different. Depending on who the building inspector is at the time, so we might as well not have that in there.
Well, what about if those items were on site plans?
That's, that's a different, that would go under enforcement of compliance with a site plan because that would be part of the approval and the resolution. That's, that's what I was trying to make the distinction because there's a lot of older homes that don't have those. And that weren't subject to code provisions that maybe required that landscaping, but.
But it seems like it's only, it seems like it's only referring to trees and shrubs that die or are destroyed, not that are voluntarily removed, correct?
Destroyed could mean you just ripped it out of the ground.
It, your, your reading is correct, except this is just, it's not limited to that. It's, it includes this as an example, but it's not limited to. So there is a little bit of.
Yeah, it's very imposing. I think if the way it's written would be imposing then, if that's how it's going to be interpreted.
Oh, no.
So do you want the whole, that whole sentence to be removed that giving examples of the maintenance? I think it's pretty clear that if you have a fence to maintain it, you're going to end up painting the fence, but if it's a painted fence.
I would suggest we get rid of trees and shrubs because you have a storm come through here and nice three trees down in your backyard. I don't know many ways. A, you're not going to find a 50 foot tree and B, you're not replacing them anyway. So I just don't want this to become something onerous in the future that somebody can use as, and if, you know, depending on their discretion.
I agree with Chris.
I'll modify that. The next is the very next section three, which is the blighting provision that I referenced earlier. And it says where the same may constitute a blighting factor and have a tendency to depreciate adjoining property. So the individual that we're really may be making that determination is the code enforcement officer as the enforcement official here. So if you don't want this, then I would suggest removing. And where the same may constitute a blighting factor, having a tendency to depreciate adjoining property. And ending that, that way, the hedges, bushes, trees shall be kept neat and free from becoming overgrown and unsightly where exposed to public view. And shall be maintained by the person responsible for the property.
That would be fine, or just say depreciate adjoining property as determined by the building inspector. I just want, there was no real arbiter in here about, you know, a neighbor could say you're depreciating my property and then I could say, no, I'm not. And then that could wind up in a lawsuit. So I'm kind of, either you put an arbiter in there or take it out, I'm fine either way.
I think even too, if you put an arbiter in there. It could. End up being an issue.
I agree with that too. I agree with you.
Okay. The next one is subsection seven, where it says a junked vehicle may not be parked, stored, or left in the open, so has to be visible from any public street or neighboring properties. So you can't see it in this law because it's amending what's already there, but you do have a definition in your existing code. That defines a junked vehicle and it does include references to unregistered vehicles. I can tell you what that says, just give me a second. So that we're, make sure we're all okay with that definition and if not, we can make a modification. So that is defined as any vehicle, including a trailer, which is without a currently valid license plate or plates. And which is dismantled, partly dismantled, inoperative, or in an abandoned condition. So it has to not have a currently valid license plate and be inoperable.
And not an or, yeah. Yeah.
Okay with that?
Yeah.
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 So the next one is a little bit more complicated. This one's in your existing code. Right now, and it talks about the areas for off-street parking, the storage of vehicles. The question is, are you prohibiting gravel driveways in the entire village? Essentially, yes, by this provision, yes, you are. Are you currently grandfathering existing gravel driveways? No, you're not under this law, but you can. It's, it's really up to the board, whatever you would like here.
There are numerous gravel and dirt driveways throughout the village.
Yep, I'm not.
Quite a few.
Make that section out?
I think we should.
Would that be better off? Because I think that would just be a hardship even on the building department and the owners of these, there are driveways that go.
Always grandfather existing ones in, but you know, I, I honestly, I think taking them out would probably be better.
I don't think that's the intent of this law, to be honest with you.
The way it reads.
My opinion.
Okay, I'll take it. Whoops. I'll take it out.
Oh, wait, Tara, did you mean by that comment, you don't want to take it out? You think it's okay?
No, no, I don't, I don't think it's the intent of the law to impose what type of, as long as it's maintained, I don't think it matters.
And that's a subjective word with regard to a dirt or gravel driveway, but yeah, I, I agree with you and I don't think it should be there.
Okay, so the next one is under B one for building in the structures. The comment was, so the provision says all exterior exposed surfaces not inherently resistant to deterioration. Shall be repaired, coated, treated, or sealed to protect them from deterioration and weathering. And such surfaces having once been coated must be continuously maintained and recoded as necessary to keep uniformity of color and texture. Such surface shall be recoded in a workman-like manner. It's, it's up to the board if you want to keep this in.
I didn't get texture. What's texture of paint? Like if they stucco the house, I mean, I'm trying to figure out what that meant.
What I was thinking was if maybe they had just a regular painted house in one location and they started to stucco it in another. But I, but I'm not sure. This is actually part of your current code. And so I carried that part forward, but. So I'm not sure where the intent of that came from.
Could it mean like a rock face? Cause like part of my house has got rock on the front of it and part of it is paint. Fighting also.
But there are some old things that would have us like a stone base. And then the paint above, and I'm not sure that you would necessarily want. Uniformity, you may find that to have existing character and add character to the community. So it's, it's really a policy decision for the board.
So we're all sitting here debating what that actually even means in the existing code.
And that's going to make it harder for enforcement, yeah, if it's not there.
So let's get rid of it.
We either need to fix it or get rid of it, one or the other.
Yep, get rid of it.
Okay, I can.
That's been our whole point with all these code changes, is to clean stuff up.
Yeah. You refer formative color and texture with paint or varnish and it's kind of hard to texture and paint and on the outside of the house. You know, so I'm just trying to figure out what it meant and I, you know, I just don't want to get again, get down into the minutia and running around and giving people tickets because we think their house is dull. You know, that's another subjective thing to me.
Yeah, so I'll take out part of that, just can, just keeping that it has to be continuously maintained, basically, so it doesn't look run down, but.
And then we deal with that on a case basis and you can build an inspector, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's only so much we can document.
So the next one is subsection four. I think this goes to what you were just talking about, about getting really into the minutia and into people's. Lives really in the interior of their structure because number four talks about how the exterior walls have to be maintained to keep water from entering. But also to prevent undue heat loss from occupied areas. That's a policy decision if you want that part in.
Um, I get the leaking part because you can destroy the house and make it fall. I got that part for the maintenance, but. If we start regulating people's windows and what do we have to go in and say, now it's time to change your windows, they're no longer efficient. I mean, that's an expense that you're going to ask the homeowner to do again, that could be something used in the future by someone. That could really be unaffordable for a resident.
It would certainly be challenged if ever attempt to make, to enforce.
Challenging to enforce that.
Yeah.
So there was a comment that if somebody's a snowbird and you know, spend six months in Florida, since six months here, that there really should be a provision included that it's not a vacant house. And perhaps they just need to notify the building inspector, I'm going away, here you go. And as it is, a lot of people notify, you know, a police department and say. Here's my, I'm going away, watch my house, so I'm gone. You know, do an extra drive-by, but I can propose some language to take care of that.
Hang on, I'm not sure that we want to force residents to let anybody know when they're not going to be at their house for a prolonged period of time.
No, no, I haven't come up with any language yet.
I don't like that idea. I mean, if they want to voluntarily let the police department know, that's fine, but. Force them to let the building inspector or anybody else know that they're going to be away from their home for weeks or months.
Yeah, no, that could incur other liability.
Can you add three words there instead and say vacant and or abandoned? To make it more clear, so it's not like people who just go down to Florida for a few months, it would have to be vacant and abandoned.
Well, if you say and or, then it's.
Right, so.
It's got to be and.
Or and, whatever.
Not or and.
The next was the inclusion of number 11 for swimming pools, so. I also found out that if we drain, that this should only be limited to in-ground swimming pools for vacant properties. A, due to expense. And you don't really want to waste the water if necessary, but also above-ground pools will actually collapse and be ruined. If they are drained, which I didn't know, but I was, I was informed. So. So that can be modified if that's okay with everybody about the conservation of water, et cetera, and rework.
Be about vacant homes and abandoned homes because the water sits in those, those pools and then what happens is you have mosquitoes, it just becomes a bigger issue. So that's really what it's about.
Also risk of personal injury under death.
Yep, or a kid climbing over some fence or exactly.
Absolutely vacant, I understand a hundred percent. It just the way it was written, it seemed like it was all pools, which would be a tremendous waste of water and expense.
Yeah.
Very good point. Number 16. Says that all plumbing fixtures, sanitary facilities, and plumbing appliances and plumbing equipment shall be properly maintained in good working condition. Chris, you're right. I don't know how you would ever know that unless you went into the house. I was trying to think of where that could come from and I was thinking maybe it could have had to do with poor plumbing calling, causing a leak in a waste of water, but. I really don't know and I don't know how that would be able to be enforced unless we did an interior inspection.
Yeah, I just can't see us knocking on the door. I want to see if the toilet's working. You know, it just, it doesn't make, it didn't make sense that piece. It's kind of intrusive.
Okay, I changed the, the 60 days for the 45 days in C six. And then D talks about vehicle parking. This is not just for commercial space. Again, this is for everywhere. Including residential, so we're back to the driveway issue. Of what we're permitting for somebody to have as a driveway.
Excuse me?
Uh-oh.
Oh.
I have a question.
Get, get rid of them.
There you go. Good job.
Where do you go?
You're getting good at this, Tim.
See somebody I don't recognize, I just hover and.
I was like, oh. You know where this is going.
At least we know Dominic's real.
Unless he goes.
Somebody else, I don't know.
Somebody else is connecting the audio, be careful.
So for this one, this, I think I'm going to have to go back to what we just talked about for the vehicle parking because this applies as.
What?
And also there should be a provision in here for.
Kelly, I'm sorry, could you repeat what you just said?
Breaking up.
Broke up a little bit there.
Oh, no, okay, um.
Just the last.
I'll revisit that section of vehicle parking. Okay. I'll revisit that to fix that in accordance with your discussion earlier, but there also should be a. Section in here about people who are parking their cars over sidewalks. Even if their driveway continues like over a sidewalk into the road, that they can't park on that piece of the sidewalk. Because that would then in turn basically.
Lock the sidewalk.
Why have the sidewalk, you're going to make them walk in the road anyway, so that should be included and I'll have that in D.
So thank you.
That makes sense, yes.
So then. Enforcement and penalties. I do think that this needs to be modified, so the penalties that are set forth in 240 dash five and six. I think are pretty good. One of the reasons why. The question was imprisonment is a bit much for just, you know, not cutting your grass, but it doesn't just include, you know, lawn maintenance and obviously that would be in the discretion of the judge. It also includes illegal dumping on properties in the village, which is why if it's something significant. I included potential imprisonment, but I, I think that removing it from the earlier section and having all of the enforcement listed in article three. Makes more sense and then there's more continuity for the enforcement of the entire chapter. And if that's acceptable, then I'll propose some different terms, but maybe have it be progressive. In terms of, you know, the dumping and other property maintenance violations, but maybe not so much for the mowing of the lawn.
Yeah, that's fine. The dumping, I get it, absolutely great catch. I think that's correct and, but I just think it's much clearer to people trying to comply with the law and read it if every, all the penalties are in one place.
Yeah, no, it makes sense. And I, I was trying to separate it based on. Severity and things like that, but I think that having it all in one location. For those people that do try and go abide by the code and follow it, I think that makes sense. So based on that and the feedback from the board, I'm going to provide the board with a revised version for your consideration. Including those comments that we discussed tonight.
Terrific.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for getting, I appreciate it.
Okay, okay, so next up, we will do public comment on agenda items only. So is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak on any agenda items? There's only a few of us, so just shout out if you have something. I will take that as a no. So we've been going for a while now. You guys just want to call it a night and end here, or you want to keep going?
Sounds good to me.
All right, we'll go on with the rest of the meeting. So administrative business, first, I need a motion in a second to accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held on February 11th, 2021.
I'll make the motion.
You, trusty Graziano, can I have a second? Trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, I need a motion in a second to approve abstract 18 containing vouchers 201441 through 20201528, totaling $216,199.44.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Gomez with the motion. Trustee Jacomaza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Excuse me. Fire department equipment request, need a motion in a second to approve fire department equipment request 2021 dash 06 totaling approximately $88. For the purchase of radio microphone to replace a broken one. And equipment request 2021 dash 07 totaling approximately $3,413.40. For the purchase of a smoke machine and personal masks for SCBCA, SCBA.
Make the motion.
Trustee Buick with the motion. Trustee Graziano with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a couple of quick extra items for administrative business. Have a budget modification first. Sending a motion in a second to approve a modification to the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget of the building department by decreasing A 3620 dot 444, which is building department schools and dues by $800. And A 3620 dot 408, building department trust roof and safe sign by $25. And increasing A 3620 dot 200, building department equipment by $800. And A 3620 dot 436, building department books and publications by $25.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Jacomaza with the motion. Trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second extra item is acceptance of a couple of resignations. Sending a motion in a second to accept with regrets. The resignation of Blake Braggerall from the position of water, water maintenance worker effective March 9th, 2021, which will be his last day of work.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Derek with the motion.
I'll second it.
Jacomaza with the second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is a motion in a second to accept with regrets the resignation of Anthony Scavera from the position of motor equipment operator effective March 19th, 2021, which will be his last day of work.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Gomez with the motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Graziano, I just hand up first, Tara, sorry. With the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We wish them both well. Moving on to old business, we have a return of restoration bond for Central Valley Property Management. This issue is still being reviewed by the applicant's consultant, so it's going to be tabled to a future meeting when all the paperwork is finalized and reviewed by attorney North. Sorry, excuse me, I was kind of there.
Did you skip the, the membership? We're not doing that one? Fire department membership?
No, you're right, I did skip the membership.
No.
And pass the former police officer.
There we go. Thank you for that. So before we move on to, while we're still under administrative business. while we're still under administrative business, can I have a motion in a second to approve the application for membership to the Highland Mills Fire Company as a junior member received from Kate and J- Janelle?
I'll make that motion.
Trusty Gomez with the motion, trustee Eric with the second, any discussion? All in favor? Thanks for picking up on that, Jesus. Okay, now we can move on to old business, and I already said the first one, so we'll move on to the next one. Action on bids received for nineteen Adams Street Interior Renovations. So at the last meeting, the bids received were read into the record by Desiree. Ord was provided a copy of the specifications of planned improvements, and a decision needs to be made on how to proceed, either award the project or reject the bids. We have a couple of options here, we either reject the bids or we award the project uh to the, we could do it to the lowest bidder or anybody else. My my recommendation would be to go to the Icon Construction Group. Um, but I'll leave it up to the board as to how you wanna proceed. Which way would you like to go?
I think, can I start? In in light of our discussions last week, I feel like we we have a lot of extra expenses, big ones coming up. I I'm not inclined to do anything right now that would double what we budgeted. Just because we just, there's so many unknowns with the budget right now, and I think we should wait until we have concrete numbers when we sit down and discuss it to decide what we do. And I understand that means the bids will expire, but I think that would be the prudent thing to do considering we have several retirements coming up with Pat, they're gonna be getting payouts as well as um potential for large equipment that's gonna be needed for our departments. That's my two cents.
Anyone else have any pennies they wanna throw in?
Do you wanna go, Jesus? Do you wanna go next? Okay, I I am, I'm kind of in agreement with Tara also, until we sort of sit down with the budget and start going through the numbers, I I'm confident we're gonna be fine, we always are. But um, I I don't wanna really take any chances. I would rather go sit down with the budget, see where we're at, see where the income. Uh, last year, we were very concerned about this and everything turned out fine once again for for the Village of Woodbury. So I would rather sit down, go through the budget sessions and maybe revisit this uh once we kinda get a better handle on uh, the equipment purchases, which we're, we're talking about some big ones, we're talking about some infrastructure improvements uh which we've, we've talked about extensively. And the payouts, cuz we have some very long time employees that uh are gonna get their payouts, but are gonna be very much missed moving forward for us. So for me, I I think I would rather probably table it for now. Or reject the bids and then we'll, we'll have to come back and revisit.
I agree, the building's not going nowhere, we repaired the roof, so that should hold us for a little bit. And when we find that we have the money to properly address it, so rather get it done and do it once and for all fix everything in one shot, and we should wait to see what kind of money we have to really play with it.
Everything in one shot, you mean not bifurcated to do what we have the money for budgeted now versus the whole thing? Uh, is that even an option though, to split it?
Well, we we're gonna, you know, based on the way this conversation's going, we're gonna have to reject the bids, and then we'll have to rebid it. Uh, get the bids in again, which may or may not come in where we have them now, and then we'll have to figure out if we have the additional budget money, just like we were gonna do now. So it's, I don't think, I don't think it's gonna come in in what we we budgeted for, regardless of.
But I'm saying, considering that it was a very large overhaul of the building, if you could bifurcate it into different, almost phases. So I understand these bids are good for the project that was bid, if we were to split it and say we're gonna do this section now for what we have budgeted at two hundred and some odd thousand versus the, I I think the largest expense is the bay area that we're redoing. Uh, that's what seems to be the driver of the cost. The loading dock area.
Bay area, cuz we're taking that usable space instead of storage or base space that that it was being used for.
Alright, so, so then, well then, obviously, we're gonna look to reject these bids, but then we would have to just figure out, we'd have to sit down with Gary. Sit down maybe with the architects and and see exactly what it is that we wanna do and then rebid it when we are ready to do so. But for now, let's make a decision on this. I I I get what you're saying, and I appreciate the clarification there. Chris, do you have any thoughts before we uh?
No, I'm kind of on the same page as you should. I mean, now we know that the bids are well over what, for what they wanna do, then that what we expected. So I think we should sit down, do the budget, look forward to what's next fiscal year brings, and we have to budget this over a fiscal year, fiscal year and a half going forward at the correct amount. I think then we budgeted at a higher amount. But we need to take a look at the project again, see if we can value engineer it anywhere, and bring it back and bring it down a little bit, and then budget correctly for going forward.
Okay, so with all of those comments then, I will now ask for a motion to reject the bids received.
I'll make the motion.
Trusty Jacomaza with the motion, I'm gonna go with Tara with the second, trustee Eric with the second, any further discussion? All in favor? Moving on. Uh, so next is the uh request, excuse me, to temporarily close Smithville Road uh for the We Are Woodbury group. So since our last meeting, We Are Woodbury sent me an email stating that they would like their plans for the plan, they would like to modify their plans for the Plan St. Patrick's Day Celebration. They're now requesting the closure of Valley Avenue of Peroni Circle uh on March thirteenth from one P M to three P M. They'll have bag pipers, they wanna have bag pipers and dancers there with Irish music being played, noting no alcohol will be involved, this is a family event. They estimate the entire event lasting about an hour, but they're requesting additional time for setup and cleanup. They're also asking for the village to sanction the event under the village's insurance. The insurance company was contacted by the village clerk to determine if this was possible. The court, it is possible, and the cost would be two hundred and seventy-five dollars to add this liability coverage to the village's existing policy for the event. So after uh uh speaking with Kate, Kate reached out to me again when she wanted to make the change, and I asked her to please put it in writing again. And since then, I've considered this quite thoroughly or or over a long period of time. Uh, and I reached out to the County Health Commission to get some input, because at our last meeting, we talked about COVID, and we talked about health implications of this. Um, so here's what she told me, and this is a quote from an email that she sent me. Uh, from a public health perspective, anytime people gather, there's an increased chance of COVID spreading. Two vaccines now being distributed and more vaccine options anticipated for the near future. There's every reason to hope for a much safer environment for related activities as time progresses. However, there are numerous cases of the UK variant that have been identified in Ulster, Duchess, Rockland and Westchester Counties, as well as the first two cases of the South African variant strain of COVID nineteen in New York City and Nassau County. Therefore, to the extent that the village decides to go forward with a parade, and this was prior to the change, you should consider the well-known health and safety risks of the same and the ways to mitigate risk. The county had a very successful drive-in airshow, which was not responsible for any COVID spread, but planned it carefully and cooperated with the state in implementing necessary mitigations. Dr. Gelman also pointed out to me the most recent CDC guidelines, she sent me a link for their page on this for events and gatherings. And I don't wanna read the whole website to you, but I do wanna read the top section because I think it's relevant here. Uh, so at the top, it says COVID nineteen cases are extremely high, avoid events and gatherings. COVID nineteen cases, hospitalizations and deaths are extremely high across the United States. To decrease your chance of getting and spreaded COVID nine, spreading COVID nineteen, the CDC recommends that you do not gather with people who do not live with you at this time. Attending events and gatherings increases your risk of getting and spreading COVID nineteen. Stay home to protect yourself and others from COVID nineteen. Now, in my opinion, and this is just my opinion, based on my experience in healthcare and my experience in local government, I I think we have an obligation to protect public health and and welfare, and and I I don't see any fiscal benefit to anybody of the village, I don't see any any other benefit other than making people feel good, which is important. And we do wanna get the community together and allow this group to have this function. But I also, I think we have to weigh that against public health, and if there's a risk of even just one more person in our community getting sick and getting hospitalized from from COVID, I I just don't think it's worth the risk, but that's my opinion, and I I'd love to hear what everyone has to say about this, in addition to the other things that we wanted to talk about with regards to this. Tara, you're nodding your head, why don't you go first?
I I hear what you're saying. If, no, no, I I I agree, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, I thought all the points made last week were were excellent points. Um, in addition to what you just said, uh, if if there is a way to do it safely, I I don't, I don't know what kind of thought the group has put into it, I've not been to any of the meetings where it's been discussed. But if there is a way where they can, as you said, they did a drive-by or something like that, that I would be in favor of that only because, like you said, it adds something positive to the community and the spirits. I just, I don't know how it would be regulated or enforced, I I think that would have to be coordinated at at their level.
That she, you know, they reached out, they they worked with State Health Department and and state government to make that safe event. You know, Jesus mentioned last meeting uh about the fact that the tree lighting ceremony was successful, there were a lot of people there and so on, but and I thought about that, and 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 it was, it was a great event, and it was wonderful for the community, but what I do remember are are a couple of things from that event. One, nobody would really social distancing, they were people clumped together that clearly did not live in the same household. In fact, there were quite a few people, it was, I don't know, I think it was about a hundred fifty people, right? There were a lot of people in a tight area, uh, you know, moving around jostling next to each other and so on. I I don't really think that was as safe as should have or could have been. Uh, and the other thing is, we late, we did later find out that there were some residents or resident or residents that were positive that had been there, and we don't know without doing any detailed contact tracing whether or not there was an issue related to that, we have no idea, and honestly, it's not important now, but um, I I was just thinking about that as well, and I just wanted to mention that with what you just said.
I I'd just like to add that in your statement, that we are gonna have, of course, COVID nineteen guidelines are gonna be, you know, followed. But like you said, to each his own there, and hopefully we have enough adults that act like adults and we wear the mask and make sure that as best possible to keep that distancing. We had a successful turnaround on the uh, on the tree lighting, and I don't expect it to be any worse than. And I think now with more time, they have the opportunity to do it a little better. Like spacing out where the people are gonna stand to watch a show, and now that the other half should be open more, you can spread out people more towards the side and the back of it. So I think it it can serve to help, cuz I think we need to uh give back a little to the community so that it can come out and there's people going stir crazy and that's, it's, people need to go out and socialize somewhat safely, of course. So I'm, I'm all for it, so.
I, I hear what you're saying, and and I I don't disagree that people need to get out and see each other, but I I just, I don't see, especially looking back to the tree lighting ceremony, I don't see how either volunteers from a group or the village or even the police department, not that they'd be involved, would be able to regulate social distancing. I I, you know, you're saying people are, you said something along the lines of people are grownups or or, I I figured what you were.
I mean, if you, if you feel that strong about getting contact or, you know, being spread or having it, then you don't come. I mean, we're not saying anyone to come, you're not forced to come, so you have to make the choice for yourself. And if you make that choice, you are making the choice to be careful about yourself, but for others also, which means you will wear the mask, you should social distance as best as possible, again, I say. Cuz it is, it'll be crowded, there's a lot, a lot of people come up, and of course, you're gonna be in closing it uh, contact with people, but you try to do your best, you know, and I'm sorry?
I I'm sorry, I didn't realize. What I started to say is, and you just said right there, we don't, you don't have confidence, and I agree with you, that people would maintain social distancing. Uh, that it would be crowded, and and we don't, I mean, I, look, I get it, we wanna have people being together and and I mean, that's, we are Woodbury, that's what it's all about, and I, I love the concept, I love the idea. I just think it's still too risky from a public health perspective. I I I think we just need to be a little bit more patient and and, you know, push through this and 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 wait. I mean, I I, I don't see any compelling reason. Well, I mean, what is the virtue of doing this in a few weeks when there's the potential for even one person getting sick? I mean, you know, I've been to a couple of funerals in the past month, and 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 I, you know, we all have another friend that's in the hospital now, and you know, there's just too much risk, there's too much uncertainty with what's happening with COVID uh right now. And without reaching out to to the state or pub or the state health department for guidance on this, and we don't know if they're gonna do that or not. But but I I don't know, I just don't see the virtue of doing this, and and just, I think we should be more, a little bit more patient, that's my opinion. I hear what you're saying, and I don't disagree with you either, it's just that, that's how I feel about it. Andrew, Chris?
Uh, I'll go first. So I I don't think, I I actually, I know, I don't think any board is taking this COVID more seriously than we have. I think every meeting we have discussed it, you're on the front lines of it. We all have, you know, we haven't gone back to public meetings, we've been doing our interviews and whatnot. Uh, for the various committees that we've begun, we've been doing everything via, doing it virtually. The tree lighting, yes, there were, there were a lot of people there, and I think you and I talked about it that that evening, that it was probably a perfect storm. Why that was so well attended, it was probably the first event that was held in Woodbury. Um, since the beginning of this pandemic, really. Uh, for me, I, I'm in favor of doing this, I, I think the community needs it, I think those that know that they're at risk are not gonna come out for it. Uh, those who may be asthmatic or but of a certain age, diabetic, whatnot, they just will not come out for it. I don't know if they're gonna get the same crowds that they got at the last one, I don't think that any other, there's no other way to do this other than to do it there. Because you have Irish step dancers and you're gonna have the bagpipes and whatnot, so it really makes it kinda quite difficult to do it any other way other than here. Maybe there's a way we can improve on the social distancing. I, from the tree lighting, there was only one person who I saw who took off their mask and they were busy smoking a cigar. Otherwise, everybody there was completely messed up, and they had done a good job on that event. So for me, I'm for moving forward with this, I think the community could use it, they could use it, pick me up, so that's my opinion on it, so CJ, your turn.
That kind of is probably gonna be long, which will probably surprise no one. Lines of thought with this, the first line of thought is, I think for future events and events like this, the village should support them. The village should sponsor them, it's it's things for our residents, we need to find a way to do this and make it work. Where it's not a private event, but sponsored by the village to do things like tree lighting, to do things like parades. I'm, I think, you know, bring the ideas, I love the ideas, and I think we should be a part of that as a village to do that. However, for this particular event at this particular time, I, especially with people blowing wind instruments, I am not for this event at this time, because you just can't social distance blowing wind instruments uh on top of having people on top of each other. I just can't, I I agree with Tim on that one. This COVID alone, like this, where the numbers now are much higher, and don't forget, the the numbers took off after the Christmas break, before Christmas, they were a lot lower. And everything took off like a rocket ship after the 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 Christmas and holiday break, and we're just starting to crest down again. I wouldn't wanna be responsible for anyone getting ill or something happening to anybody, so I I kind of agree with that, and and then once the DOH to me, once the Department of Health says something, that's the definitive guidance for me, and you know, I I make a career out of working with the Department of Health, so.
Tell us what to do one way or another, she just pointed us in, you know, in the direction of information, but we seem to be a little split on this, so what I'd like to do before we call for a vote, before I call for a vote, is is uh, discuss the other issues that we would have to talk about, whether it's for this event or any other event uh with regard to insurance and with regard to paying for highway overtime and things of that nature, so uh, we did get the quote for uh the insurance for this, it was two hundred and seventy-five dollars, if I'm not mistaken, the highway overtime costs were about three hundred and ten dollars, is that correct, Desiree? Or is it, was it two hundred and ten? Am I close?
Uh, that was for the five hours for the parade. I don't know if Rob was consulted to determine how many guys he would think would be needed for this smaller event. But it would, you know, it would depend on how many personnel he feels needs to be present. You should ask him.
Well, I mean, I see him on the, on the camera, but I'm not gonna put him on the spot, I mean, would a couple hundred bucks be be about in the neighborhood? Okay, so, so we're looking at about uh uh call it about five hundred dollars, right, two seventy-five plus another couple hundred, a little less than five hundred dollars uh, be, in total costs to the village. So the the broader issue, and and Chris mentioned this earlier, and I agree with Chris on this, I I think that we as a village should definitely be looking forward to, uh, looking in a uh looking in a forward direction to sponsor events like this as much as possible for the community, especially once it's safer to do so if we don't do it now. But that still begs the question, uh, do we take on the responsibility to fund all events like this? Do we seek money from the private group? Do uh do we seek donations? How do we go about doing this? What would the right path to be? Because whatever it is we do now, if we're gonna be setting a precedent to do for other events moving forward. So we have to carefully consider that.
Right, and I think that to force people to do a an event like a tree lighting or a or or a St. Patrick's Day parade or Memorial Day parade, to force that to a private entity to do that event is too onerous on the private entity. And I think that's something we should be doing anyway as a village. So I think all around, I think it makes much more sense for the municipality to sponsor these events. Now, people can bring us ideas and say, I think we should have X, Y, and Z. And I think as a board, we can say, you know, a St. Patrick's Day or this parade or that parade or Memorial Day parade is a great idea. Let's do it as a village. And I think that's where, my opinion, that's where we should go. I don't think we should put the the onus on the private entity. No, you know, because they shouldn't be holding events through the streets of Woodbury. It just gets too confusing. It crosses too many different insurance and 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 legal lines. So I think for us, we should have some sort of, you know, event assurance for the village eventually going forward that covers events, multiple events during the year that we can have and do them safely and when we can do them safely. But I think we as a village, you know, should do things and give back to the community. And I think taking the ideas from the community and and giving back when it's safe to do so would be my preference to do.
I think what we could do is, you know, we are coming into the budget cycle. We're starting our department meetings next week. I think what we could do is budget a line item, call it half a dozen events throughout the year. We have a general idea of what it might cost per hour, and we can, you know, even if it's two, three thousand dollars, it's still not a lot of money. Uh, we can, we can budget for that appropriately, and then we wouldn't have to even have this conversation when it comes to paying for events like this. Um, but for this particular event, uh, while considering we just said that, would that even be a consideration then? Should we just uh uh make it a village event, a community event hypothetically, and just cover the expenses? Or again, uh, we we have to dot those i's and cross that t? What are your thoughts?
Well, like I said, I'm again in favor of covering the events as a village, because I think that's what we should be doing, but they just, this event is, I think, too early in the COVID, but still, but whatever. Even if we do this, if we if we vote that we're gonna do this, I still think we should do it as a as a village as a policy.
Because I'd like to hear if anyone else has any comments with regard to paying for these events. Do you like the idea of?
Yeah, so I I think the the justification we have is if we're trying to hold an event to promote certain activities in the village, like a downtown revitalization type of thing, I think that it should be an expense we bear. Um, it's it's helping our small businesses. It's attracting people to the area that may not otherwise have come here. Um, if we're looking at Smith Clover Road, you have a plethora of businesses there that would benefit. Um, considering we're forming our revitalization committee, I think the two go hand in hand. Um, so I would be in favor of us putting a line item in our budget for future events to pay for them for us to pay for them.
We're all nodding our heads on that one. I don't think there's any argument. Andrew, you have any thoughts on that?
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
So do we wanna have any other discussion with regard to this We Are Woodbury uh event request before we move on to any motions? Okay. So, um, I mean, we can go either way with this. So here's what I'll do. I will ask for a motion to permit the We Are Woodbury event on March eleventh, twenty twenty-one at seven thirty PM. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong line. Was it the thirteenth?
Believe so.
I scrolled down too far. My apologies.
Yes, it's the thirteenth.
Thirteenth from one to three, I'm sorry. Um, so I'll repeat that. So I will ask for a motion and a second to approve the We Are Woodbury request for March thirteenth from one PM to three PM. And then we'll have further discussion after we have motions if necessary.
I'll make that motion.
Trusty Jacque Mazza with the motion. Trusty Gomez with the second. So now any further discussion on this motion before we vote? Okay, so how do we vote? Let me rephrase the question. All in favor? Say aye. So that's trustee Jacque Mazza, trustee Gomez with the ayes. All opposed? Raise your hand and or say no. All right, so that's me, Chris, and Tara oppose. So the motion does not pass. I vote a three to two. Okay. I think that was a a good conversation and a good debate and good information, and I look forward to uh further events that we as a village can put together on behalf of the community.
So are we gonna make a motion about us agreeing to cover these things or no?
No, I think it's premature right now. I think what we can do is put that into the budget. Uh, because there's no event to approve anything for right now. So when we do our budget discussions and our budget hearing, uh, we can have that as part of the budget. We'll pick an amount and pick a number and so on, and then we'll we'll go from there. But I think that's a great idea. I like that idea. Okay, all right, great.
I'm gonna notify Kate that I know she's not on, so should I?
I, we know why she's not on, never mind.
Oh, we do.
Yeah, we know why. Okay, okay. She has a valid excuse.
Okay.
Um,
Okay.
She called me. I'll reach out to her. Okay. So let's move on to new business. We have introductory local law for environmental conservation committee. So I'm looking for a motion in a second to introduce introductory local law four, which will amend chapter thirty-six Environmental Conservation Commission of the Village Code. This law will assign the duties of this commission to the planning board members. So I'm looking for a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing to be held on March eleventh, twenty twenty-one at seven thirty PM on introductory local law four of twenty twenty-one.
I'm making that motion.
Trusty Jacque Mazza with the motion, motion, trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion?
Hang on, you just, I'm sorry, you just combined two things. You have to introduce it first and then make the motion to schedule the hearing.
Okay.
You're right.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I mean, unless you wanna do it as, Kelly, can they do it as one motion, both of them?
We'll do this too much.
We can do it as combined.
Uh, I'll I'll ask again for the motion in a second to introduce local law number four, which will amend chapter thirty-six Environmental Conservation Committee, the commission of the village code. This law will uh assign the duties of this commission to the planning board members. So we're motion to introduce it. So trustee Gomez with the motion. Trusty Jacque Mazza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? And I'm sorry for any confusion. Now I'm looking for a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing on March eleven, twenty twenty-one at seven thirty PM on introductory local law, local law four of twenty twenty-one.
I'll make the motion.
Trusty Bureau with the motion, trustee Graziano with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for the clarification, Des. Um, so finally, under new business, we have a resolution for COVID relief for low SAP qualifications. So this is a resolution to amend the Woodbury Fire Department Low SAP point system to afford active volunteer firefighter program participants credit for an additional five points per month O-rated for periods of less than one month from April first, twenty twenty through December thirty-first, twenty twenty. This is due to the inability of active firefighters during the pandemic to hold regular drills and training during which they normally accrue low SAP points. So I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt the resolution as as presented, amending the length of service awards program pursuant to general municipal law section two seventeen P.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, trustee Bureau for the motion. Trusty Jacque Mazza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay. Uh, so that concludes regular business. Let's go out to public comment. Uh, anybody in the public have anything they'd like to say? Okay. Hearing nothing, we'll go on to board member comment. So I have one brief comment. Uh, as we continue to work our way through this pandemic, I'd just like to remind everyone that local businesses depend on your support now more than ever. We're approaching a year of hard, a full year of hardship for these businesses. In order to survive, they need our help. So please consider a local business when you need food, a haircut, a pedicure, or anything. Local businesses are run by local families and they deserve our support. That's it. I'll be brief tonight. Uh, let's go down to trustee Graziano.
All right. Good evening. Thank you all for attending. Um, you know, first, I'd like to encourage everybody to continue being diligent with the pandemic that we just discussed earlier. The numbers are declining once again, but we cannot let our guard down. I understand that the tea with restrictions, I understand that the tea with masks, but it is necessary until we finally put this pandemic in our rearview mirror. I understand the frustration those of us feel hunting continuously for vaccine appointments. As somebody myself with underlying conditions, I implore you to hang in there and keep trying the same as I am. We all need to remember that while wearing a mask or social distancing may be inconvenient, it may be uncomfortable. It's a hell of a lot more convenient than being hooked up to a ventilator in a hospital or even worse. This is not just about ourselves, remember. It's also about helping and saving others. Whether you want to acknowledge it or not, the United States now has over twenty-five, the world's COVID cases. And over a half a million Americans have lost their lives in a single year. Those are cold, hard facts that should give us all pause. There's light at the end of the tunnel. We will beat this. It is only a matter of time. We just have to remain vigilant and look out for our fellow human beings, and that is the only way we're ever gonna win. Moving forward, you're gonna hear a lot from me about One Woodbury, which are two words that should mean something to us all. We are one community, one set of neighbors, one geographical area, One Woodbury. I take these two words very seriously, and as we expound on them, please remember a few things. One Woodbury does not mean one Woodbury only if I agree with you or if you acquiesce to my wishes. One Woodbury is not looking at things in a myopic way or pushing a single viewpoint. One Woodbury is all of us, friends, neighbors, family, not just the chosen few. And most of all, One Woodbury is inclusionary of all people within our borders. We're going to have to work hard to get along. We are all going to have to make sacrifices, and we are all going to have to compromise occasionally for the common good. More to come on this. But in the end, it will be such a wonderful thing to see the people of One Woodbury standing side by side, working shoulder to shoulder and showing the rest of the world how amazing Woodbury truly can be. Thank you. Good night. Stay safe and please remain healthy.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, trustee Gomez.
All right, I'll keep it short, too. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Thank you, Rob, and the Highway Department yet again for providing great service in the last round of snow and ice that we had. I would also like to thank all of our villages departments for the great service they keep providing to our Woodbury community. Please look out for your neighbors and especially the elderly ones who might have no one there to help them. Please wear your mask, and I'll keep praying that this pandemic will be over soon, and for those who have or had COVID nineteen, a speedy recovery for you all. God bless and good night.
Thank you, Jesus. Trusty Bureau. You're muted. Had to be said at least once tonight.
Sorry. Thank you, everyone, for watching tonight. Um, these last few weeks have been absolutely brutal for our highway departments and our fire department, um, based on some of the posts on Facebook. Um, I thank all of the men and women who show up every day um to do a remarkable job and for keeping us safe on our roads and with all the emergency calls and accidents. You all make Woodbury so proud. Um, while February is coming to a close, um, I I think it's important that we still keep in in mind that it is still Black History Month. And it's it's been a time to celebrate the success and achievements of African Americans um everywhere. It's also a time that renews the work, dedication, struggle, and struggle for justice and equality. This historical work and this activism shouldn't be combined just to the month of February. February should just help remind us that the struggle for light and truth has been and will be ongoing. Looking forward, uh, next week is the beginning of March, and March is Women's History Month. Uh, with March eighth is being International Women's Day. Twenty twenty-one's global theme for this day is choose to challenge. A challenged world is an aware world, and from challenge evolves change. Choose to challenge in order to inspire change. International Women's Day is a day where we celebrate all women and all of their diversities. We celebrate their facets of faith, race, ethnicity, gender, or sexual orientation or disability. We celebrate those who came before us, those who stand beside us now, and those who will come after us. COVID nineteen has impacted women in a profound way professionally, only highlighting the inequalities women face each and every day. It is absolutely fundamental that diverse women's voices and experiences be incorporated into the national and global recovery plans to address those inequalities. There need to be more women that take the global stage in leadership roles. More women need to be given the opportunity to lean in to those roles and to take active roles in molding the policies of the future. I ask each of you watching tonight to use International Women's Day as a day to recognize how far we've come towards achieving gender equality, but also to recognize how much further we have to go. Where women were once restricted from voting, now women are leading countries. While we were once faced on restrictions on where we worked, we're now running multinational corporations. Men and women alike use this day as a time to show solidarity with those special women in your lives, your wives, your mothers, your sisters, your friends, your coworkers, and let them know that their voice matters and is valued each and every day. Use this time as a way to celebrate women's achievements, raise awareness against gender bias, and finally, to take action for equality. Raising awareness today will ensure that our daughters prosper in a more balanced and equal world in the future. Thank you all again for listening and for attending tonight. Be well and stay safe.
Thanks, Tara, especially for the reminder about next month. Good stuff.
You're welcome.
Trusty Jacque Mazza.
I'll I'll keep it short tonight. Um, I've got a couple of housekeeping items. First, I wanna start by offering my thoughts and prayers to our former counterpart on the town board, uh, Mike Essick, who is battling a combination of COVID with pneumonia. So uh, not a very good combination for for him. So um, I'm praying for a speedy recovery for Michael and back at the Dunkin' Donuts buying his favorite large cup coffee sometime very quickly. Um, I'm working, I wanted to let the residents know that uh with the village clerk Potvin's assistance, we are trying to get lights on Valley Avenue. Uh, one, just as a safety concern, but also just when we do these events or if this revitalization committee gets off the ground and we're looking to do outdoor dining or things of that nature, sort of similar to what Monroe is doing. Uh, the outdoor lights out there can come in handy. Uh, I wanna announce that we are, we already have a date set and um for our second annual my cancer blood drive. So this year will be held on April tenth uh from nine to three right here at Village Hall. I will be posting a link uh that you have to sign up for. They are taking walk-ins, but uh I would say that the best bet is to schedule a timeframe. We are doing this, and I spoke to both Kathy Hansen and I spoke to Tracy Maggio, and we are doing this in honor of of Tony Maggio. And that may be the way we go moving forward with these blood drives is that we do them, the village sponsors them, and we do them in honor, in memory of Michael Hansen, in honor of a local resident that recently passed away. Uh, the Altis agreement, I am also working with the mayor and village clerk Desiree Popkin on, and I just looked saying that Desiree Popkin. So uh, the current agreement does not expire to June twenty-eighth with the town of Woodbury. So from there, we will be, uh, we're currently just negotiating to get the franchise agreement in place. And I just say, stay tuned for more details. Um, for all those of the Jewish faith, I wish you a happy forum. And um, that's it. Thank you for joining us and have a good night.
Thank you, Andrew. So let's go out to department heads. So let's start with Des. Nothing? Okay, Rob?
I have nothing to.
Rob has nothing. Kelly, any final comments? Uh, Mickey, I see Mickey down.
I know, Tim, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Natalie, you have anything? Engineering? No. Okay. All right, so now we're gonna be moving into an executive session. Uh, so I'm gonna be looking for a motion in a second to enter into an executive session pursuant to Public Officers Law Section one oh five one D to discuss one item related to proposed pending and or current litigation. After the executive session, uh, we will be immediately, will not be making any decisions, and we'll be immediately adjourned after that. So nobody needs to stay on for that. Uh, so I'm gonna have that motion in seconds, please. Trusty Gomez with the motion. Chris, did I see? Yeah, I thought so. Trusty Graziano with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you and good night, everybody.
Good night.